Want to make a subjective? Students that waited till the last one minute meeting to get their comments. They should have been able to vote.
That's torture.
It's a short meeting anyway.
Really? They waited till the last.
I mean, I'm not.
If it wasn't for the last minute, I wouldn't get anything.
Well, we know that.
Dennis, we know that.
But it is. I'd like to call the meeting to an end. Would you please rise and join with us as we honor our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a need to amend the agenda. We had late personnel action added to the agenda. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda? Tim, a second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Then can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Pam, a second. Dennis, any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. No. It's been a long day.
All in favor? Public comments. The board does value input from the public. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the Board of Education at this time? If not, then let's go to the student representative report. Our student representative tonight is Ben Granero. Ben is a senior this year. He will be attending St. John Fisher in the fall. He plans to study accounting. He's a strong student, but also involves himself in extracurricular activity. He was captain of the basketball team, member of the National Honor Society, treasurer of the National Honor Society. He has helped to organize events like the blood drive and talent show, and the high school will certainly miss Ben's style and kind nature. Ben, please.
So thank you all for having me here tonight. I do have to start off with a formal apology to Mr. Pullen. He told me I had to wear the bow tie and suspenders. I only did half of that. Moving on, though, the seniors are starting to wrap up the school year here. We had our senior trip in the beginning of April. It was a ton of fun. It was very cold. It was a little rainy, so we had to deal with that. While we were visiting there, we were able to go to sporting events like a Yankees game, a Knicks game, and there were some Broadway shows. We were able to look over the city at night in the Empire State Building. And then one of the highlights for myself was the dinner cruise. We got to go out all around, all around the city and see that. And it especially helped when I finished off the night beating a kid from Kansas in a dance battle. So that was pretty cool. Students have finished our IV and AP testing here, and that happened at the beginning of May. And there were lots of activities to celebrate at the end of the year. Everyone enjoyed prom in May. I didn't personally go, but all the juniors gave quite the good report. And we also had a very nice senior banquet at one of yours. This year, moving update, we had a little assembly, and then we also had a vault for bucks, and our school raised $9,724. I just talked to Ms. Pulsini today, the NHS supervisor, and we were the biggest area in the school for fundraising for that, so I thought that was a neat section there. Senior picnic is going to be on Monday for the seniors, so tomorrow's really our last full day. And the Regents exams are coming up for the next two weeks. And after that, we have graduation, which is going to be on June 19th at 6:00 PM at Kodak Theater. And it's on the ridge in the city there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
Best of luck at St. John Fisher.
Thanks.
Board member comments. Do we have any board members who wish to comment? Pam?
I was lucky enough to go to the middle school excellence luncheon. Was that last Friday, I think it was? And then go to the awards night last night. And it's refreshing to see such young adults being, you know, not only academically responsible, but civic, having civic duties, just be involved in their communities.
Tim?
I'd like to congratulate Ben on the talent show. I was at the talent show. My youngest son likes to go there. We've been for a few years, and I hope that's a tradition that keeps going on. And just want to show hands of people on the board that have experienced the senior trip as a student here. See? It's another good tradition we have.
Anybody who says no?
Can I raise my hand? I was a senior class advisor when the senior trip started.
Very good.
Do we have other board member comments? Dennis?
Well, we can definitely tell that the end of the year is coming because it's been quite busy. I've been here three nights this week. Last Friday with Pam, I attended. What really astonished me was how much these kids do on their own outside of school, eighth graders. I thought I volunteered a lot, and these kids put me to shame. The other thing, too, is I got to go to the Red Wings game and watch the Free Will play the National Anthem, which was pretty good. And that's all I have.
Any other board members? Joe?
After our meeting here, was it Tuesday? Tim and I swung into the middle school concert here in the pack and only caught the last two or maybe three songs. But I was extremely impressed. I'd like to congratulate Heather Melnick from the middle school on a wonderful job. The last song was quite entertaining, although you would never catch me singing or dancing to anything. They did Uptown Funk, and they got the place rocking. It was really, really cool. So it was a great job. The other thing I would just like to mention is I noticed that the track teams had their banquet this week, and the girls' track team had two eighth graders that earned their varsity letter, which I was very, very impressed with. Having been a track member here, it was impressive to see two eighth graders, Olivia Gilbert and Shanna Gorski, both got their varsity letter, which I was very impressed with. Also, I'd like to congratulate Tanner Frida on his 1,600-meter, Section 5, Class B championship. That was also very, very impressive. He also, Tanner also set the school record this year for the 1,600. So congratulations to Tanner on that. And last, I see that the high jump for the girls' track team, the girls' high jump record was tied by Kaitlyn Bonzik at five feet and four inches. Ironically, she tied it. She shares it with one, two, three, four other people, one of which is my wife. So I'm rooting for Kaitlyn to break it. I understand she's, I think she's a junior sophomore.
She's there now.
She's got, she has some time left, so I'm rooting for her because if she beats my wife's record, then I will have won the internal bet of who's high school track record lasts the longest. But that's a sidebar. So congratulations to the students on the track team. That was very impressive.
Do we have any other board member comments at this time? If not, then let's go to the superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening, board, community. We'll start also with some highlights, great things happening across the district. Abby Duett, many of you saw her in this year's production of Legally Blonde. Abby has been selected to represent the Rochester area in the national competition in New York City, the National High School Musical Theater Awards exercise. Really a big honor. I think we've had another student that this took place with a couple of years ago, so it's really great when you think of all of the students in the Rochester, greater Rochester area, Monroe County, Wayne County, our student was selected to go. So that's really fantastic. So congratulations to Abby tonight. Also, some of you mentioned the middle school excellence award that we had last week. We had a number of nominees and winners. And also, two students, Claire and Brandon, who were honored just last night for excellence in terms of academics. This prestigious award is given to our students for outstanding performance and for their community service. I'm really proud of all of our middle school students who were honored in this past week. So just really great things happening across the district. Just some other things in terms of our study. So we have had Rick Tim's report in the workshop just the other night, just to make sure everybody knows that we are taking that workshop. The entire video will be online so that the entire community can see it. If they have questions, it'll be there. And also, the PowerPoint is there as well. The second portion of our study, by the way, the study, the results are always being posted on the comprehensive study tab on our website. So people looking for it, certainly you can send them right to that. The video, let me go back a second here. I apologize. The SES workshop is coming up on the 13th. That's Monday from 6:00 until 8:00, right here in the boardroom. That's with Dr. Saversky. And in that workshop, he will talk with you all about his findings, and then he will also get feedback on you, and he'll list or share with you some of the options or recommendations that he might have. And then once that whole piece is done, he's gotten input from the board, on the 23rd, he'll be back, and he will talk with the entire staff. He'll share also the findings that he has and then recommendations. And then after presenting to the staff at 10:00 AM in the Performing Arts Center, that night, he'll be back to do another presentation to the entire community, and that'll be at 7:00 PM, following the board meeting that'll be at 6:00. So the board meeting will be from 6:00 to 7:00, and then his workshop at 7:00 o'clock on the 23rd. Reminder also, we have the upcoming tri-boards meeting happening, I believe, next week on Thursday, if I remember correctly. So we'll be busy a little bit. And then the transportation study piece is coming as well. We do anticipate that we'll have the final report in hand early next week. Mark has given me a call, Mr. Walsh, and said that what he'd like to do, if okay with the board, is come on July the 7th. On the 7th, we have a board meeting, which is our normal reorganization meeting, and I believe we can pretty much get business done within an hour. So we want to start that earlier as well at 6:00, and then at 7:00, he could come and present to the board the findings from the transportation portion of the study, if the board is okay with that. Would that work out for everybody? Just try to do it on the same night we're meeting. Okay, so then we would have at least three portions of the study all set, and then the last portion, the capital projects piece, they're still working on it, so he got started later than all the rest. So he's working on it now, and then hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I'll have more information back about that. Just wanted to kind of share that with everybody. And please know that tomorrow, board, I plan to put a note out to the staff to just share with them what we've learned so far in the study and to encourage people, if they're looking for information, to go to the website, see the video, see the information, and continue to put things there. Okay, so now I want to just shift gears a little bit. I'm going to ask Amy to come up. Every year, we do our exit piece with regards to the budget. So when people go and vote for the budget, we ask them to fill out a survey if they're willing to. Some people will fill it out, many won't because they want to go home where they got kids. But we had about just under 50 people who responded to this year's survey. So we're going to ask Amy to come and to share about the results of that survey with us a little bit here. You know, come out to where you're at as well.
Okay, great. So this year, we did not have a large amount of respondents. We only had 45 people respond out of our 800 or so voters. But it still gives you a little bit of a snippet as to what our voters are doing and thinking. So we'll get right into it. Our first question was, do you have children enrolled in our district? Out of the respondents, 60% said no, and 40% said yes. It's a reflection of a lot of our voters are seniors, 61 and older. The next question, are you a Wayne Central School District employee? Over 80% were not, and about 16% were. And that is a pretty good correlation to how many people work here versus live here. Your age group, here's survey respondents, most of them, 61 and over. What I found interesting in this group is we had no one in 23 to 30 fill out a survey. And Mathis brought up, which I think is a really valid point, those are people with kids and they're in a hurry. I think that's true. Yeah. So our largest group is our seniors, and then our 41 to 50-year-olds. Where do they get their information? This has been pretty consistent for as long as I've been here. Our newsletter is very valuable. People rely on it. They're used to the format. They like it. They use it. Along with that, they use our local newspapers, and people are starting to look at our website a little more. So as for voting yes and no on our budget portion of the vote, we had 84% of our respondents say yes, they voted yes, and then about 16% say no. What's interesting about us, our 61-plus voters are pretty supportive. So 75% of our 61 and older supported our budget. What also was interesting this year, which I haven't seen before in our exit poll results, is our 41 to 50-year-olds, only 70% supported us, and the ones that did vote no have kids in our district. So it's an interesting bracket to kind of look at. Say it again. Our 41 to 50-year-olds who voted, only 70% said yes. 30% voted no, and those that did vote no do have children attending Wayne. And what's not unsurprising at all is 100% of our 31 to 40-year-olds supported our vote, and those are parents generally. Bus purchase proposition, very similar to the regular proposition. We did have one more person vote yes for the buses. And that is it. Any questions?
Did you nail them, say anything about the, you know, we did have the old-style voting machines? We had the paper. Was there an issue for anybody?
Not for anyone.
I know it's a long, but...
We had a comment section. Only five people responded to the comments, and generally, it was regarding, I don't want to pay for this kind of thing. We spend too much for people or our...
Can we just get paper?
Yes, this year, we only did the paper.
Would it be helpful if we handed them the paper, too, while they're sitting down to fill out their...
I think so. So last year, we did pretty good. I want to say we had about, I think, 80 to 100 respondents. And this year, we had half. Last year, I was able to coordinate with Tracy Dumpito and get students to actually push people, and some of the students were great at auditing and saying, come, fill out the survey. So I think we did get more respondents because of that. So that's something I want to do next year, and I think we might bring back the computers, too. This year was unique because we had a new way to vote. We were in the gym versus the hallway, so it was all a little different.
The other thing, too, is that night, there were a number of things going on in the district. There were concerts and things, so some people probably were in a rush trying to, you know, get going, so...
Yeah, parking was an issue.
Okay.
Do we have any questions? No, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'll call up Dr. Syracuse and his team. And so, board, earlier this year, we talked about, we brought in all the press flows, and we talked about how we can be responding to the needs of all students. I just want to kind of give you the follow-up report to tell you how things have gone this year. And one of the things we worked a lot on is response to intervention. This is an entire process that is now in place in most districts across the state and across the country in terms of how we, and what it's about is how we intervene for kids who are struggling academically. So I'm going to let Dr. Syracuse and his team talk a little bit about response to intervention and what we've been doing this year to meet the needs of our kids. And then afterwards, he's going to share a little bit around APPR. Many of you have been reading in the newspapers how many districts are really working on their APPR. The legislature has now tried to, they put, if you don't get your APPRs in, which is the annual performance program, professional performance review, you don't have your evaluation system organized and together like the state has now put it together, that you lose funding, basically. So a lot of districts have been working really hard on this. Our district has been working together with our teachers' union. We were able to complete our APPR, put it together. The union recently got it ratified last week, so they're now in agreement as well. And so tonight, Dr. Syracuse will share with you some of the highlights from that, so you know what's there. And once we're all settled with that, we just have a signature we need from the board president, and we're all settled. So we'll kind of go through that tonight with you. Okay? Thank you. So here with me tonight, Chelsea Eaton is our K-5 math coordinator, and Kim Schultz is our K-5 ELA coordinator. And we are here to talk about how we're doing with our students who are in intervention. Our data will focus on the K-5 population. You know, we're really thankful for the work of the Strategic Planning Committee. And when we think about our new mission and vision statement, in particular, our core beliefs, we think about trying to reach and teach all students, really, the putting students first, the first core belief, and committing to all students being successful learners, as well as holding ourselves and our students to high standards. That really speaks to our work with our most at-risk and needy kids. We don't give up. We believe in them. We believe they can reach high standards with support. And we're here tonight to talk a little bit about our progress toward that end. You'll remember this fall, the principals presented with us their school improvement plans, and a large piece of those school improvement plans are, you know, how we intervene with kids, helping kids reach higher standards. We talked a lot about these seven components that occur in our, in our school system. A big piece, the response to intervention piece, is something administratively. We've been working on this school year, fine tuning, and we're excited to roll our streamlined process K-12 consistent for the fall. That'll be ready for publication for our parents and community, and we're going to have a consistent approach as students struggle, regardless of what building they may be. So how do you measure student growth? It's tough. It's tough to measure our effect on student outcomes. There are so many variables. As a team, when we talked about this, we settled on looking at two pieces. One is growth, and the other is current level of performance. So it's kind of, you can use the analogy of weight loss. You're going on a diet. A lot of people have gone on diets throughout their lives, and, you know, there's, am I losing weight, or am I making progress towards my goal? And then there's, have I reached my goal? So the first part of the presentation will be that first part in terms of growth, our students in intervention making growth. And then the second part is, of those students in intervention, have we gotten them to the standard yet?
Okay, so we actually use STAR assessments. They're a computer-based assessment, which adjusts to the student's level. It gives us an accurate picture of how our students are performing on the state standards while measuring their growth and achievement. We give STAR three times a year. We give it in the fall as a baseline. We give it mid-year to progress monitor, to adjust our construction. And we give it in the fall, or I'm sorry, in the spring again, to check the growth and achievement of our students, how they're doing and the growth they're making. We chose STAR because it is nationally normed, and the results have closely correlated with our New York State exams.
So we'll begin by looking at the growth measure. What we try to do is, we need a marker. So we look at all students. How are all students performing? K-5. And the first piece is on ELA. So the blue portion of the graph on the left shows that about 77% of students are making adequate growth, as measured by STAR. And then we look on the right side of the chart, and you'll see that is of all students in intervention, and we see a similar result. 69% of students in intervention are making adequate progress, as measured by STAR. So we find that encouraging, that our most at-risk kids are almost on par in terms of the growth measure for ELA. In math, it's a similar story. 75% of the kids, three-quarters of the, of all students are making adequate growth, as measured by STAR. And when you look at our students in intervention, again, that number stays at 69% of students in interventions are making progress as it relates to STAR. And as Kim said, STAR is norm reference, and it takes students from where they are, so they have a starting point, and it norms growth over time. And it says the 41 points, if students make 41 points worth of growth, it says they're on pace to get there, to get where they need to be. It doesn't say that they're there yet. So we know that we've taken a close look at our subgroups. We want all of our populations to thrive. And we know that from our strategic plan, from our school report card data, that we have a couple of subgroups that lag behind their peers. And those subgroups are economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. This is a chart you'll see a couple more times, so I'll just take a second to explain. The first set of graphs on the left, that's all students again, and that's where that, this is for ELA, and that's where that 230 students out of 335 students in intervention made adequate growth. The next chart, or the next set of graphs, are students who are neither economically disadvantaged nor students with disabilities, and 70% of those of that subgroup made adequate progress. The third chart are economically disadvantaged students. And the reason the graphs, the graphs are showing the total number of students, so it's not, it's not, I'm not graphing the percentage, but I'm graphing the aggregate so that you can see where our populations are as well, because it would skew it when you have fewer kids, you know, it looks like there's more impact than there actually is. But our economically disadvantaged kids in the area of ELA who are being serviced under, in our academic intervention program, actually, 70% of them, they're right on pace with both all students and non-disabled and non-economically disadvantaged students. Then we have our students with disabilities, and about half of our students with disabilities are making adequate progress in intervention. And then we have students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged. So we only put students in one of the four categories, either you're not, or you have, or you're one of the three. So that 36 students, those students both with an IP and economically disadvantaged. And interestingly enough, I mean, you wouldn't, it's a small set, but you wouldn't expect kids in that group to outperform kids in the earlier group, but they did. 64% of the kids who are both economically disadvantaged and impoverished, at the poverty level, are actually making adequate progress.
Sorry, I'm not sure what you said.
I said they're making adequate...
With a roll.
So a similar story with math. You know, that we got about 70% of the kids making adequate progress. And then this is one where our students without an IP and our students who are not in poverty, 98% of those students. So this is one where the numbers kind of intuition and the actual outcome, they do, they would match. And then you can see, again, 50% of students with disabilities and about 50% who are in that both category. So we definitely want to increase our capacity to help students who are economically disadvantaged, and we're always looking to do better with our students with disabilities.
Joe, can I ask you a quick question? In the category of students with disabilities, is, and I don't know if you have studied this, would the number be a lower percentage because of the wide range of disabilities that children have?
I don't know that for sure. I mean, one of the things is, these are general ed services, and students with disabilities are, they are able to access these services, but we look at their IP, we look at their needs, and we look at their program. But just because you have an IP doesn't mean that you get academic intervention services, but it also doesn't mean that you don't. So it's kind of, you know, it's hard to say.
Okay. Thanks.
So that's the growth. We're happy with the growth, and I took the, I took the positive side, and I'll turn it to Chelsea to talk a little bit about how we're doing. Are kids at the standard yet?
As Joe discussed, you know, both ELA and math, our kids are really growing, and we really need to highlight that, and we're encouraged with that as we're moving forward, looking at a variety of subgroups and our students as a whole. But we do realize that we have more work to do as we're moving forward, looking at the standards. And, you know, at Wayne Central, utilizing the new strategic plan, we've really set the bar high. We're setting the standards high for our students because we've realized that if we set that standard and benchmark high, then the correlation is much more clear between the state standards and their success on the state test, like Kim had said earlier, as to the benchmarks that they're taking. So the standards charts are illustrating that we still do have our work cut out for us. You can see that 37% of our students within the K-5 in ELA are at or above that 75th percentile. So they're at or above where they would be proficient on the New York State test, if we're having that correlation. Within our kids that are in our academic intervention services, 8% of those kids are at or above. So you can see that that's a highlight as to what Joe was talking about, that this is an area that we're working to focus in. Yes, our kids are making the growth, but we want them to be at that point where we're looking for them to be at the end. We did see a little more success with math, with our students meeting the standards. There was 52% of our students in math, K-5 total, that were at or above our benchmark. If we looked at our AIS students, there was 23% of our students that were at or above. So those students of 63 students that were in academic intervention services, they those students of 63 students that were in academic intervention services, they did make that growth, as well as they're on target with that benchmark that we've set. These graphs are similar to the ones that Joe had discussed earlier with the ELA and the math. We looked at them in the same way as the growth measure. So you can see that we had, for example, 312 students that were receiving ELA, AIS. That's the bar all the way to the left. Within that, however, we only had 27% of those, or 27 of those students actually reached that standard that we had set of that 75th percentile. Moving on to the next subgroup, the students that were non-IEP and non-economically disadvantaged, we had 186 of those students, and 16 of those students had reached our standard benchmark. Moving on to economically disadvantaged, we had 101 students that were receiving AIS services, and seven of them met our benchmark. The next one, students with disabilities, we had 12 students that were receiving AIS reading services or ELA services, and three of them met our benchmark. And then the last column, 13 students were economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities, and one of our students had met that benchmark standard that we had set. And math was similar. If we had 272 students that were receiving AIS services across K-5, and 23% of those students had met that benchmark or attained those standards that we had set for them. Students that were non-IEP students and students that were not economically disadvantaged, we had 130 of them that were also receiving services, and 32% of them did meet the benchmark that we had set. 111 students economically disadvantaged had also received services, and 17% of them had met the benchmark. 16 students with disabilities also received AIS services, and 19% of them had made the growth, or met the achievement that we had set. And 15 students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged also received math AIS. However, we didn't have any students that met that achievement standard that we had set for them.
So we've shared a lot of data with you in a, in a short amount of time. I can tell you that we also looked at some of our 6-8 data. We use STAR in grade six through eight in the area of ELA, and we saw similar, but not quite as good in the, in the growth, just a little bit, a little bit less in the growth, and similar on the standard attainment. We don't use the STAR at the middle level the way we use STAR at the elementary level with the same degree of fidelity and consistency. We are looking at using STAR as part of our strategic plan to help us have consistent benchmarks, K-8, to allow us to, to follow kids all the way up through to ninth grade. Will take any questions you might have?
If they still had AIS this year and met the benchmark, would they continue in AIS next year to make sure they don't fall back, or?
So, maybe. So you'll look at, so there's those two pieces, that growth piece, a lot of them made adequate growth. We have about 8% in the, in the ELA make the standard. They might exit out of that at-risk group and into, into just a mainstream group. It depends how the teachers are feeling about, there's teacher input into, into those groupings too.
And we use multiple measures. So we look at multiple measures to see how they're doing, and they may exit out, or we may pick them up and just target a certain, if it's reading fluency, we may just pick them up for a short amount of time and just target that fluency area with them. So it's, we try and keep it fluid because we don't want them to fall back. So, and that's why we continue to monitor them as well.
Joe, do we have any data on UPK as to how that?
Following them up through?
Matches in. Do children who maybe don't come to UPK for one reason or another, are they lower than our kids who do UPK?
So I can tell you that one of the things the strategic plan is going to do is to take a more consistent look at that data, and to have those conversations, and to collect a good baseline. Intuitively, I have, I have heard our principals say that they absolutely know who has attended UPK and who hasn't, based on, you know, their K readiness skills. But that is just, that is, we didn't quantify that. We couldn't graph that for you. But that is an important thing that the Strategic Planning Committee is going to put a subgroup together for, and we're going to make sure that we get better data on that.
Thanks.
I think the strategic plan was a good decision to go with, and I heard aloud and clear about to, probably to make this more successful, some of these scores, that the pre-K to birth, or birth to pre-K is going to be very helpful to give them the readiness when they come in. So it's not just only kids at UPK. We're going to have, try to come up with ways to encourage kids to, and parents to have their kids more ready for school. So that will be doing better. So looking forward to it.
I'll have a million more in peace if we're here.
Any other questions from the board on that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chelsea, you're like a 10th board member. You've been here so much.
Chelsea, you should, you can take off. Chelsea's got some other commitments she's got to definitely take care of, her daughter, so. So yeah, as Dr. Calvin mentioned earlier, we, we work closely with the teachers' union and we've, and the principals' union, and we've come up with an APPR agreement. We're working on getting that uploaded to the portal, making sure that we have no laps in our state aid or anything like that. So we, for the teacher APPR, we had a, we had a very active committee. You can see the, the balance of teachers and administrators that came together to discuss the APPR product that we came up with, and it was a very collaborative endeavor. One of the things that we have consistently said is that we want our, our APPR process to enhance the teaching and learning process, and where it can't, we want it to at least not interfere with it. So I think we've met both of those this year. I'll start out with some teacher highlights, and keep it very just simple and straightforward. There's two measures that go into a teacher's final rating score. One is classroom observation. We use the Charlotte Danielson rubric. And the other is based on student performance. So if you're, we differentiate between tenured staff and probationary staff, and you'll note that we say minimum, because there's, there may be times where we, we want to get in the room more often, and more importantly, there are times when the teachers would like us honestly in the room more often. So we want to keep that door open, of course. So for tenured staff, a minimum of two observations, one by what we call the lead evaluator. That would be a building-level administrator, typically a principal, assistant principal. But it could be in the area of physical education or health, it could be the athletic director. So we just call it a lead evaluator, and it's a building-based person. And then there's what we call the external evaluator. And the way Wayne Central is, is taking, handling this is that, the law says it can't be somebody that's housed in that building. So we'll use other administrators around the district to go into the building to do the external evaluation. Myself, some of the principals will cross-observe. Mr. LaRouche, Mr. Scheich can do it. Mr. Charison can do it. And then for probationary staff, we add an extra observation for the principal, really. The principal needs to have ongoing conversation. They're the ones who make up the, give the lion's share of the feedback to the staff members. So we have two observations by the lead evaluator and one by the external evaluator. And those aren't really, those aren't weighted the same. Really, the emphasis, 90% of the weight of the evaluation is put in the hands of the principals, with 10% of it going to the external evaluators.
Joe, is there a calendar on when those have to take place?
There is a calendar. We do one, at least one in the first semester, and then one in the second semester. That's locally. I mean, the calendar is September 1 to July 1, but locally, we've said the first semester and the second semester, at least one by the, in the first semester for staff. You could do more.
And for somebody who's probationary?
Same, but we typically get into their rooms fairly quickly. So one of the differences between the observations are announced and unannounced. And I really wasn't going to get into too, too much detail with that, but as much as you'd like, I will give you. The external evaluator is going to do the unannounced, and it has to be for a minimum of 15 minutes. Could be much longer. The lead evaluator would do the announced, and that's for a minimum of 30 minutes. And we say minimums because if you're a kindergarten teacher, your lesson might be 30 minutes. But if you're a high school physics teacher, it's probably going to be closer to the 80. The idea is to give teachers feedback about what's going on in their room. The next piece is the student performance measures. Now, in the past, we've done SLOs or student learning objectives, all different, all across. We're doing pre- and post-assessments. One of the things that New York State is trying to do is minimize some, some of that testing. You know, the right amount of testing is the least amount of testing you need to do to get the information you need to make good decisions. So we're doing a district-wide student performance measure. And so basically, every staff member is, you know, we're all pulling in the same direction. We all have stake in this. So it's a, it's going to be a combined measure based on the New York State science exams in grades four and eight, all regents exams, and then the grade-two STAR reading and math. So we'll look at proficiency, percentage of students, reading proficiency on each of those measures to come up with a score, a score for the student performance category that will be shared basically by all staff. You take those two measures, and we have, I'm sure some of you have heard of the Heidi scale. Basically, you look at the teacher observation, and if that amount, then if that turns into a score of highly effective, effective, developing, or ineffective, and that's where you start on the top row, and then on the vertical row, wherever your student performance is, and you kind of bring those two scores together, and that's where you fall in the matrix. So all teachers will find a score of H, E, D, or I. Okay? Now for the principals, it's very similar. Their rubric is the Reeves Leadership Rubric, but they'll have what we call observations, and they'll have a student-based performance measure. So they'll have 50% from the observation process and 50% from student achievement. All principals will receive at least three observations, two by the lead evaluator, and that will be the superintendent, and one by an external evaluator, which will be myself. Mine will be unannounced. Dr. Calvin's will be announced. And those, those observations can happen with building walkthroughs. It can happen in, in staff meetings or data meetings. It can happen in a variety of ways, data analysis meetings, those sorts of things. And the principals actually will have the same measure as the students, or as the teachers. We'll be using the same combination of tests, and we think if it's good for the teachers, it's good for the administrators. We're all in this together, so why wouldn't we judge our performance based on our students' performance in a similar way? Now, there are some changes that are, come down the pike with, with APPR, but I've given you what we're doing next year. I didn't, I didn't think it was, especially since my suspicion is change is the only constant that will happen with APPR in the next three years. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Let me just, as kind of Joe was saying, so with APPR, there are, you know, there's some new laws already in the works. So this will be this upcoming years, but we believe in the near future, there'll be a change again. So probably within the year. That's kind of the way it's been going. So the commissioner's doing a lot with tests and changing a whole bunch of things. We know that's happening now, so we'll probably be back again to look at revising this again, working together.
Questions on APPR?
Thank you.
Okay, so with that said, that's superintendent's report tonight, so we can move back now into the board business.
Under board business, we have an action item, which is to adopt math expressions and to fund that, that program. Can I get a motion to approve the math expression program? Carla, a second. Phil, discussion. Any discussion?
Well, I'd like to make it clear that this does not come out of our district budget as a direct expense. It's state-aided, and I'm not sure exactly how it all works, but if you want to elaborate on that for anybody in the public to, to know, since we're looking at tightening things up.
Great. We are using textbook money. The textbook money is aided. It's on a per-pupil basis from the state. We have, in this current school year budget, we had a significant amount of textbook monies that we put toward the purchase of these books. It's the only thing you can purchase with textbook monies. It's something that we kept our eye on. I kept my eye on all the textbook budgets, and once it came to the point where I could use them for this, that's what we did. And then we'll use, again, textbook monies in the 16, 17 year to cover. So between this year, it will all be from our textbook aided monies.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Greg.
It's a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement up to our amount to give us so much per pupil time to our enrollment. And I think our textbook allocation is $180,000, give or take. So for that amount of money, it's dollar-for-dollar reimbursement. You spend that money, you get that money back in state aid.
And this again is what grades again, Joe?
K-5.
K-5. And it includes the textbooks and the consumables.
Three years' worth of consumables, and it's, math is confirmed. It was a pretty good, very, very price. I've not seen it.
Sorry.
Do we have any other board member comments or questions? If not, can I get a show of hands for approval? Thank you. Under consent agenda, we have a consent agenda of CTSE recommendation, the minute meetings, personnel action with an appendix, treasurer's report, the athletic equipment bid, instructional technology gifts, CSEA memorandum of agreement on dental insurance, surplus equipment, budget transfers, audit committee meeting from April 14. Can I get a motion to approve? Dennis, a second. Carrie, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Committee reports, I don't believe that any of our committees have met since the last board meeting. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
If not, then let's, we'll go to board president comments. I have just a couple of comments for tonight. I had the privilege of hearing the commissioner of education speak.
May 23rd.
Yeah, May 23rd. Thank you. For those in the audience who are interested in the commissioner's remarks, a couple of things she said that struck me as being teacher and education-friendly. She said you are likely to see less testing time, that students will not spend as much time in testing. You are also going to see more teacher involvement in the design and construction of the test. You are also going to see the state slow down in its approach to testing. And the last thing was that we have a new test maker. So Pearson is out and a new company is in. I came away from that meeting thinking that New York State did very well in its selection of the new commissioner. I would also like to add a, a public relations coup. It was reminded to the entire Ford County group that the only art hanging in the state education building is art from Ontario Primary, from the second grade art classrooms at Ontario Primary. I also had the privilege of attending a couple of awards programs, the award program at the high school. If the students used the scholarships that were awarded that night, I lost track at over $400,000 worth of scholarships being offered to our students. Now, they have to go to the school that offered them the scholarship, but that's still a sizable return for a lot of students. I also had the privilege of attending the middle school awards ceremony last night. 116 kids were recognized. I had the privilege of attending the outstanding school citizen luncheon, in which six students from each team at the middle school were nominated. And much like Dennis said and Pam said, I was astonished. We really are, we really are growing some Renaissance young people in the Wayne Central School District. The other thing I would like to commend, the girls' lacrosse team. They won the Section Five sportsmanship award in lacrosse for all of Section Five. Our girls' team was selected by the officials to be recognized for their sportsmanship. And my understanding is they finished seventh in the state in their academic average, that their academic average as a team was collectively over 97%. So congratulations to Lisa Simpson and to her team. And then last, Ford County has suggested that as a school board, we may wish to send a letter to our state legislators, state legislators about two items. Veterans exemptions, opposing the increase in veterans exemptions without state aid to go with it, and then the linking of the APPR with our, our school's aid. So if that's an issue that you think we want to follow up on, perhaps we, you could send an email to Dr. Calvin, and we can get it on our future agenda. Okay?
Yeah.
The last thing I have is that- The last thing I have is that on, as Joe and Dr. Calvin had said, one thing we can be sure of is change. On July the 12th, the New York State School Boards Association is sponsoring a summer law conference. It will be in Rochester on July the 12th. If any members wish to attend that, I'm sure we could probably make arrangements to do that. That's all I have. We do have a need to go into executive session to discuss the evaluation of a specific individual. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Pam, a second. Carrie, all in favor? Thank you.